The clock in Lee, New Hampshire. I call this meeting to order as chairman of the Select Board due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis and in accordance with Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-04, this board is meeting electronically utilizing the Zoom platform. We previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using Zoom and instructions are provided on the town of Lee's website at leenh.org. If anyone has problem with access, please call 603-659-5414, extension 312. Please note, all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. We'll start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. Selectman Bugbee?
I'm here alone.
Selectman Casper?
Here alone.
Selectman Brown here and alone. Well, now we'll enter into public comment. This isn't something we've done a lot of, so we might be neophytes at this, but we will start with public comment, which is intended to allow members of the public to speak to the Select Board on subjects that are not included on the agenda. Please use the raise hand feature and wait to be recognized and unmuted. You will have three minutes to speak. If you are using a telephone to connect to the meeting, please press star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. Press star six to unmute yourself. Do we have any participants?
Zoe Selig?
Hi, so I'm Zoe Selig. My pronouns are she/her, and I'm a sophomore at Oyster River High School. And I am a member of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Club at Oyster River. We're working within our district to reform education and make our district more inclusive, but we also want to bring that work into the rest of our Oyster River community, which is why we were very excited when Selectperson Casper gave us the opportunity to speak tonight. So very quickly, I want to go over a couple of terms that we're going to use, so just to make sure we're all on the same page. So one is racism, which is just, it's really hard to define. It's a lot more broad than this, but we can define it as prejudice or discrimination directed against a person or people because of their race. I also want to talk about types of bias. So conscious biases are the beliefs we have about a person or group that we are consciously aware of. So we're fully knowledgeable that they exist in our minds and often act on them intentionally. And unconscious biases are social stereotypes about certain groups of people that we form outside of our own conscious awareness. And everyone has unconscious biases about various social groups, but people are just as likely to act on these as we are with ones we are aware of. So it's our responsibility to recognize these unconscious and unfair biases and correct them. And then, I'm not sure how this works, we are going to have three people speak, so should I just pass it to the next person?
Now Zoe, we already had you ready to go on the agenda, so why don't you just continue?
Yeah, we'll have her on the agenda, and then we'll do a public comment after that.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm done, I think, then?
Who do you want to pass it off to?
Can Paige Burke speak next?
Can you unmute?
Hi, I'm Paige Burke. I'm also a sophomore at Oyster River. I'm part of the same club. My pronouns are she/her, and I just want to talk a little bit about the importance of racism, non-racism versus anti-racism. And just to define it, non-racism doesn't really exist because it would mean that a person that is non-racist would still be complicit in the racism around them. So I like to think of the conveyor belt analogy, which is that we are all on a conveyor belt that represents racism. We're all moving towards racism. And if we're standing still, that means that we aren't intentionally racist, but we aren't intentionally anti-racist either. So notice that we're still moving forward. If we're walking or running forward on the conveyor belt, that means that we're being complicit, like complicitly racist, intentionally racist, and we're doing more harm than those that are standing still. But if we turn around and do the work to be actively anti-racist, and we go against the flow, that's what we want to do. And it's harder work, but it's important that we always look for opportunities to do this. Thank you. And I'd like to pass it on to Maya.
Hi, I'm Maya. I'm also a sophomore at Oyster River, and I use she/her pronouns. And I just wanted to talk about some ways that you can help. One way that you can help is to further educate yourselves on racism, anti-racism, microaggressions, and more. Becoming anti-racist is an ongoing process, and it can't be completed in a short period of time. Examples of resources include books, documentaries, podcasts, and more. You can also recognize and understand your own conscious and unconscious biases and look toward overcoming them. And a really important way to help is to support people of color and listen to their voices and concerns. Try not to speak over them or undermine them. And it means a lot to students because youth voices are often talked over and not valued as much. And it means a lot, especially to students of colors, for their concerns and issues to be listened to, and it makes students feel more comfortable and accepted, and less hesitant to reach out or speak up about issues in the community. And not just listening, like also taking action shows us that you value our opinions and our role in the community. And I just wanted to thank you all for inviting us here. Just inviting us is a huge step toward becoming a more equitable town, and it means a lot to us that our voices are being heard.
Thank you guys so much for coming on tonight. I invited you because I was so impressed by when you spoke at the school board meeting, and I think you have some really impressive ways of explaining things that it's less politically divided and more just really understanding what each person is trying to say. So thank you for coming on tonight and sharing some of these definitions with us and helping us sort of open a door to the conversation. Took a lot of courage. Thanks, guys. If you want to stay on and learn about what happens in Select Board meetings, feel free. You don't have to, but you're welcome to stay.
It was. It was very good, and the presentation was good, and we're glad you came on board. So we'll move on now. Do we have anybody else host?
Do you have any public comment?
Yeah, do public comment?
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, we will, we will move on then to item four, which is Deborah Sugarman, Trail Committee Chair.
Oh, hi. Thanks for having me on. So I have two things that I want to talk about. Well, actually, three. So just to update you on the Trails Committee, if you're not familiar with that, we are a subcommittee of the Conservation Commission. We were started in February. We have 14 members on the committee, very enthusiastic, hardworking people, which is great. We've already done two workdays. We worked at Little River Park. Well, first, we worked at Maude Jones and did re-blazing of the trees and some, there's a new trail over in Maude Jones, so we blazed that, and we did some trail maintenance. And then the next weekend, we did a day at Little River Park, where again, we did blazing trees and, and so erosion mitigation, which was good. It was definitely needed on the trail. We, if you're, if you're up there, you might see some signs that say, please stay on the trail, prevent erosion. And yeah, so we're, we're cooking right along. Our next, our next workday is June 19th at the Town Forest. So we have a lot of work to do at the Town Forest. So that's just an update. One of the things that I'd like to do is purchase kiosks. One of the things that we're finding is that information is really, really important to the people who walk on the trails, and especially at the, at the Town Forest. And one of the things that we're really trying to do is make our, all the trails in town accessible, safe, and enjoyable. And that's one of the reasons that we're doing a lot of blazing and erosion control and, and just trail maintenance kinds of things. So what I'd like to do is purchase six little kiosks, and you can, if you click on the related attachments, you can see them. I'm going to write a grant to the Trails Bureau, which is a state agency. Oh, Julie's going to share the screen. Yeah, so there's a picture of the, of the kiosks. It's, they're made by a company called Timber Homes LLC out of Vermont, Montpelier, Vermont. And the Trails Committee, we talked about these and thought that it would be really nice to have consistency throughout all the different trail systems that we have. It's, it's nice and small. It's not as big as the other one at Little River Park. And the purpose of this would be to hold a map, signs on what's allowed, what's not allowed, any kind of informational pieces that we need for all the trail areas. And we want to put one at Little River Park, right in between the Ridge Trail and the Woods Trail, so that people can see it right there. We'll put two at Maude Jones, one at the Garrity Road entrance, and then one at the other side, the Turtle Pond Road entrance, which is not really an entrance yet, but I'll talk about that in a minute. And then we also wanted to put three at the Town Forest, and we decided to put three so that we can disperse the parking, because everybody seems to park at the transfer station, and it, it's kind of crowded. So we thought we'd put one at the transfer station, one behind the library, and then one at the safety complex, so that, and, and people will know that those are our specific areas to enter the, the trail system. So, so I, I have a motion to accept, let's see, let's read it. It says, "Move to authorize the Lee Trails Committee to place six kiosks on town land as follows: Little River Park, Maude Jones, Forest at Garrity Road, and Turtle Pond Road; Town Forest at Transfer Station; Public Safety Complex; and the Library."
Okay. Any, any questions?
The estimated cost is at the total, and then we would be paying the 20% or the 80%?
We would be paying the 20%, and the 20% is all labor. So we don't have to pay anything. Yeah.
Fabulous.
Yeah. Yeah, so with, with putting up six kiosks, that's a lot of labor, so it covers, covers that more than 20%. So, yeah, that, good question. I forgot to say that. And I have a call into Timber Homes. I haven't talked to them about the specific cost. $9,000 is just estimate for right now.
Okay. Anybody else? Comments? "In that case, I move to authorize the Lee Trails Committee to place six kiosks on town land as follows: Little River Park, Maude Jones Forest at Garrity Road, and Turtle Pond Road; Town Forest at the Transfer Station; Public Safety Complex; and the Library." Can I get a second?
Second.
Go ahead.
I saw your lips move, Catherine, but I didn't hear you, so.
Well, Scott, Scott seconded faster than me, so we can let Scott have that, yeah.
Okay. Okay, great. Motion passed.
Not a competition. It's not a competition.
I want to buzzer.
I'm for it. I'm for it. Selectman Brown, motion passes.
What? I didn't vote.
I thought you did.
No.
Okay.
He just motioned.
Selectman Bugbee?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Selectperson Casper says yes, too.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, then the second one is about a new trail at Maude Jones. So the group that's working with Maude Jones has been meeting with Don Quigley several times to, to understand the history of the area and the trails and all that. And he would really, really like us to put in a new trail on the Turtle Pond Road entrance, using the Turtle Pond Road entrance. And that, if you, if you don't know, he, there's a, a little driveway there, a little parking lot. Karen Rossi had a parking permit for Don Quigley to take students back, they're UNH students, and they did some clear cutting and some planting so that they could do some demonstration areas. And so what he would like, and there's a great glacial erratic back there. It's not really big, but it's the only one we have in town, I think, which is pretty exciting. And what he would like is for us to build a trail back there that goes past the erratic, goes through the demonstration areas, and sets up some environmental education markers about forestry and clear cutting and growing timber and things like that. So, so it should be, it should be a really fun trail, and it will go all the way down to the stream. And then we'll build a little bridge to cross the stream and connect to the trail on the other side of the stream, which is the, the main Maude Jones trail from the Garrity Road entrance. It's confusing.
Questions? Comments?
Has the driveway been approved at that site yet? Do we know?
Karen said she put it in, but she hasn't heard yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And Steve and I, once, once we get the driveway permit, Steve and I are going to talk about that, so.
Anybody else? "In that case, I move to authorize the Lee Trails Committee to put in a new trail on the Turtle Pond side of Maude Jones Memorial Forest as presented." Can I get a second?
I will second that. Could you hear me, Karen?
Yes, I got it. I got it. Okay. Roll call vote. Selectman Bugbee?
Yes.
Selectperson Casper?
Yes.
Selectman Brown? Yes, motion passes. Thank you, Deb.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
She is. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I'm here tonight to introduce Emily Woodall. She is a person that has been using our library for years with her two sons and herself. She's been with Friends of the Library, and she realizes how important our library is, and we have drafted her, and she has been very anxious to become part of our trustee board. We have an empty position due to the fact that one of our trustees resigned a while back, and Emily would then fill this, the rest of that term until March of 2022. And Emily is here. If you have any questions for her, she works at UNH, and she could tell you what her title is better than I can.
Do you want me to say something?
Yes, just.
My name is Emily. I work at UNH. I'm a social worker there, and I work as the Assistant Director of Psychological and Counseling Services, which is the student health, mental health clinic at UNH.
Okay. Questions? Comments? Emily, you have a great smile.
Oh, thank you.
Emily, can you tell us why you want to be on the Library Trustees Board?
Good question. Well, so yes, I've been living in Lee here for a while, love the library. I got involved with the Friends of the Lee Public Library about a little over a year ago, and just been really interested in helping out more with the library in particular, and it just seemed like a good opportunity to do some more service here in our community.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Any more questions? Comments? Okay, in that case, I make a motion, move to approve the appointment of Emily Woodall to the Board of Library Trustees to serve until March 2022. Can I get a second?
Second.
I saw Scott's mouth move. Was that?
I seconded it, yep.
Okay, roll call vote. Selectman Bugbee?
Yes.
Selectperson Casper?
Yes.
Selectman Brown? Yes, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Steve Bullock, where are you?
Tom Dronstfield is actually next.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Tom Dronstfield. I grabbed the wrong piece of paper.
Good evening. The first thing I'd like to talk to you about, the board had spoke of bonuses for employees. I believe it was $250 bonus per employee. And I can see that being, if everybody got the same bonus, I could see that being a little problematic, especially if it's based off of evaluations. I had some employees who had a much more favorable evaluation than others, and I think that giving everybody the same across the board could be an issue. And I've talked with the department heads, and we seem to be on the same page as that goes. So what I'd like to request is that the board allow each department head to dole out the bonuses as they see fit. We get the one lump sum, and then the officer that's working at this level gets that bonus, commensurate with how they're working, and so on.
I would like to say that when I spoke to all the department heads, one of the things that I thought was incredibly admirable, but also in this moment worries me, is that all of you said, "I would rather get nothing and make sure the people that work for me get, get more." So can we have a way to make sure that you're also making sure that you get a piece of that, a part of that? Or is that not a concern you have?
It's not a concern I have, but it doesn't, I'm not going to speak for the other department heads.
Okay. Well, let me, let me interject. Back when I was working, the way we, and this was for very large companies, the way we handled the merit pool was that for each department, they would get, based on the amount of people in their department and what the total salary package was for, so what the total for the department was for payroll. If we decided that the merit increase is going to be 5%, they would get 5% of what the total payroll number was, and they would be able to then use that 5% to dispense for the merit increases to the employees. Some employees got two, some employees got three, but they had to stay within that budget that they were presented for the merit pool. And that's the way it should work. Truly, that is the way it should work. The department manager should be responsible for calling the person in and say, "Hey, here's your merit. Here's your merit." You know, you may be a little disappointed, but you need to be doing this, doing this. And of course, it would reflect also in their evaluation. So I absolutely support that method of dispensing for merit increases. Nobody knows better than the manager of the department or the chief of the department than how the people perform, what their attitudes are, how many times are they late, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I think it's, it's the best, best possible way you can manage, you can manage a salary pool. That's, that's my input.
Just to, just to walk, I think we're using terms that, at least when we had the discussion about this, that was not the intention. It's not a merit increase. It's really an across-the-board, that's, that's flat for everybody.
That's fine. You can, you can call it whatever you want.
Well, there's no merit whatsoever. So in terms of what you asked for, chief, it's really an across-the-board. So in my opinion, they should all stay the way they are. It's not meant to be, you know, if somebody's not performing as well, that's not what this is for. We struggled a lot with this in terms of giving nothing versus giving something. So we kind of went with giving something, but giving it across the board so everybody gets something. So there's no merit based in it at all. That was not part of our discussion. So I'm not in favor of your suggestion. I'd like to keep it the way it is, so.
Is there any way to, are there, I mean, I'm guessing that there's raises and things, but is there any other way to honor what Chief Dronstfield is also saying?
There's, in my view, there's no discretionary money in there whatsoever. We decided to give it out that way based on the limitations that we saw in the budget. There's no more money, I don't believe, that's in the pool. But that was part of our discussion, so.
I guess my concern is, we do the yearly evaluations, and somebody who really works 150% all year comes up with a stellar evaluation, at some point, they're going to say, okay, what is my motivation to keep working at this level when this person here is getting the same? That's my concern.
We've had those discussions in the board when we discussed this whole thing. There just wasn't any extra money that we could find for this particular purpose this year. I totally agree with what you're saying, chief. I totally agree. But there was not very much money. We didn't feel comfortable in terms of allocating anymore, because we went back and forth in terms of giving nothing, giving something, and we decided on just a little something for everybody. So I understand your point. I totally agree with it, but that's the way it is. Hopefully, this coming year, when we have these discussions, we can put some more money toward it, but the town's very tight at the moment, as you probably know. So we've got some things that are coming up, the whole Fairpoint issue. We've probably going to have to spend lots of money in terms of satisfying that particular thing, so I can't agree. I'm sorry.
Is there some way, when we talk about in the future, that you could say this is going to be the base amount? Let's say it's $250 a person. Everybody's going to get $150, and then that additional $150 will be based on merit or something that we could have some ability for the chief to, to say something.
Yep, we've done that before, but this year was extremely tight. Previous years, we've done something similar to that. We've had a cross-the-board, and then we had some meritorious monies that we passed out, but they're just, we didn't see it this year in terms of being able to go that extra step. All of our people do excellent jobs, and we tried to give them something just to keep them going this particular year. But I can't say in terms of the future, but previous years, we have, so.
Any more comments? Chief?
No.
None of this. Let's move on then to Steve Bullock, Public Works Director.
Chief Dronstfield has something else.
Oh, sorry.
And so, do you vote on that, or?
It's up to the chair. You can vote on it if you want. Somebody has to make a motion and second it.
Well, what are we going to vote for? A lot to do it?
Are you, are you saying that because it was discussed in the past that that has been, that that's happened so that it's not flexible? Or are you saying that it's flexible? I guess that's the question, because I, I'm not sure I agree with the choices that were made in the past, so. How, what is the option there?
Make a motion. Make a motion and see if you get the votes. So it only takes two, as you know, Katrin.
All right. So I motion that everybody gets a base amount. I don't know what the numbers are, so the base amount in each department, and then there is some amount at the top that is flexible based on merit. Does that work?
I don't think we can do it that way.
All right, then, there you go. That's fair. You can vote it no, right? Or do you mean that the motion can't work?
I think we'll just have a quick discussion. I think we need to sit down and, as a Select Board, at a, at a time that we can sit down and go through the whole thing and decide what, what could we do if we did this or if we did that? And just keep it on the table, because the fact is, that would be the best way to manage the pool individually by department, would be to have the, the department heads do it. So let's see what we can do to get there.
I don't mind doing that in the future, but Katrin, this last year was wicked tight. So when we have those discussions, they're usually in December, usually. I don't mind if we want to do that. I'm totally open to it, but this past year, I don't, there's just not, the money isn't there. We're only talking about $18,000, and after you get done taking out, hold on, I'm pulling up the spreadsheet right now.
No, I understand. I do. I understand, and you're right. So, you know, let's just, we're going to agree to, we're going to agree- So, you know, let's just, we're going to agree to, we're going to agree to look at it here a little, a little bit in the future to see what we can do.
I think, Mr. Bugbee, are you saying this year you want to go ahead and just do what is in plan and then in the future you want to, you want to have, have that discussion back in December?
Yes, totally, definitely. I, I'm against what we already did, because there's really not money, much money there. As you can see in terms of what the departments get, $250. So maybe the chief says, you know, employee A does more than employee C, so I'm only giving the employee, you know, C like $50. We're talking like 50, 100, $150 changes and, you know, I, I don't think that's appropriate at this particular time. But going forward, I'm totally into what the chief is asking.
Is that based on, everybody gets the same amount based on the number, no matter how many hours they work or what they do, I'm just kidding.
The, yes, if you're part-time, there's a different amount, it's a smaller amount. But the full-time people all got the same amount, so.
So can I ask a question then? Because what you just said brings me to what my question was going to be. I'd rather not get my bonus and give it to the two part-timers that have been working in that transfer station during this pandemic. That way they get the amount that the full-timers get.
How about if we take those individually and we'll have discussions about those, or are you okay with that? I don't want to say, you know, each department head has to give their money to their staff, I don't want to say that.
Well, I mean, if, if it doesn't go that way, I just assume, I'll just write him a personal check and give him 250 bucks that they get, that I got paid.
Well, I think the town could probably do that, but can we handle those on a one-on-one basis?
Yeah.
If you'd like to do that, let's have that discussion and we can have Julie make the appropriate changes. If other department heads want to do something similar, that's fine, that's up to them. And you should be able to handle it through the town's payroll system, so.
I just think it says a lot about the people that are department heads, that that's something that everyone brought up to me and it really matters to them. So thank you for caring about the people that you work with so much, I really appreciate that.
Can I just get clarification on one thing?
Yes.
Tom, you weren't asking for more money, you were just asking to be able to take what money you were going to get.
And decide who's got.
And decide who was going to get what.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted some clarification.
And Mr. Bugbee, I think what you're trying to say is that you think that it's such a small amount that in order to have it be an amount for anybody, it has to be.
Well, I think what the chief is trying to do is he's trying to, because what discussions we had is this particular money that we're giving is not a merit bonus or a merit or any kind of bonus or anything like that, it's really an across the board. So if you're here working, you get it. There's no consideration in terms of, you know, employee A did excellent job, they should be getting more, it was across the board. So instead of using across the board, because that's usually the percentage, we put it in as kind of like a bonus, but it's a flat bonus, which is really an across the board kind of cola kind of thing, so.
Mr. Chairman, are you going to entertain comments from the attendees?
Yes.
All right, Sally Fleming has her hand raised. Go ahead, Ms. Fleming, you can talk.
Well, thank you, Denise DeValle more or less answered my question. I didn't know if the money had been dispersed already and if it actually was asking for more money or the same money that you got, so thank you. That's it, thank you.
Okay. All right, let's move on.
Okay, Durgan Preserve, and then actually also Noah Young brought this to my attention, I hadn't given it much thought, but Durgan Preserve is open again. We have a number of issues there during the late nights, the overnight, people drinking, doing drugs, having sex, so on. Talked to Steve, he seems to have issues with litter there. And we feel it's probably the people who are there overnight, in the late night hours. So we discussed it and also Young brought it to my attention, he's, well, Little River Park closes at dusk, why can't this close at dusk? So that's, the agenda request is to close at a dusk. I did receive a call from a resident in town when he saw the agenda and voiced some concerns that he and other residents fish. They use their kayaks, they use that access to fish at night for horn puff. And he didn't want to not be able to do that. And what I explained to him is, we're not there patrolling for people who are doing or using the area for what it's meant to be. But right now, if one of my officers goes in at 2:00 in the morning and somebody's back there, we have no recourse, because it doesn't say they can't be. So if, if somebody's in there using it for a legitimate purpose, we're fine. But I have a hard time believing that at 1, 2 o'clock in the morning, there's any legitimate purpose. So if it's closed at dusk, then my officers can enforce it more.
So Little River Park is open, open until dusk unless there's like an event planned or there's been some special permission. Would it be possible for that person to get permission from someone to do that fishing? So that you would be able to say it's closed at dusk, except for if you've got permission?
Oh, yeah, I, I, I don't think that we would need to tie somebody down with having to take those requests. I just explained to my officers, they, you know, they use their common sense and if that person's in there, you know, if their car's not there, they walk down the path to see if anybody's along the path. You know, chances are they're not there, they're going to have a kayak rack on their roof, you know, we'll know that they're fishing and we'll leave them alone, go back and check the car maybe an hour later. This gentleman said that they're usually not there any later than 9:00. They're usually off the water and, and out of there. So, you know, we can try it this way and, and if it's not working, then perhaps we can go to, well, you have to request permission. But I, I'd hate to make, create more work for Denise or Julie or anybody to field calls and say, hey, you know, we need to do this, we need to do that. And, you know, a lot of times, 7:00 at night, a couple of buddies might go, hey, let's go fishing. And they, they can't call and get permission.
How do we avoid the challenges where somebody might think, well, this person kind of looks suspicious? And so I'm going to call and let somebody know there's somebody here. And then other times, somebody doesn't look suspicious and, and how do we, I, I feel like it's very open to interpretation, so I worry.
We rarely get, get calls, it's our officers being proactive, we, we do an actual directed patrol there because there have been issues with littering and everything in the past. So it's when our officers actually go in there and they find somebody. But really, there aren't really any neighbors there to, to complain about it. And then my officers will get there and they'll deal with it, they'll figure out why are you here? You know, if it's somebody from, you know, Derry, New Hampshire, you know, why are you here at this little park? This little parking area.
Chief, could we just say, close it at 9:00 PM and that covers the people that want to do the fishing?
We absolutely could do that.
Good idea.
And then that just covers everything and if anybody's there after 9:00 PM, they're probably there for some nefarious purpose.
You can tell they get back fishing.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's the best way to do it. So will there be, what, will Steve or somebody put up signs that say, you know, this closes at 9:00 PM?
Yeah, I'll work with Steve on getting that done.
Okay, all right. So then.
Something on Facebook, the e-cryer and.
All right, so I, I hope if, you know, I'm there fishing and it's 9:10 and I'm getting ready to leave, that your officers would be a little bit more.
Write him up.
You know, close at 9:00, but you know.
We'll, we'll, we'll give you the standard, you can pay the recor, the recor operator the fee and get your car back.
Exactly, thank you, yep.
Okay, I guess I won't go fishing at night then, sorry.
Spring clock, Mr. Bugbee.
Yeah, but when you're fishing, time just, you know, flies by, so, especially if you're waiting to get that big one, you know?
Time's the next.
All right, all right.
I thought the bigger problem was all the beer cans that were left behind.
I don't drink beer, so I'm all set.
Okay, all right, just checking, just checking.
So do you need a vote from us, chief, to do this, I assume?
I believe so, Julie?
Sure.
So I guess I move to set the closing at the Durgan Preserve to 9:00 PM at, in the evening.
Second that motion.
Do you want to do the vote?
Roll call, roll call vote, selectman Bugbee?
Yes.
Select person Casper?
Yes.
Selectman Brown, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right. So now we are at Steve Bullock.
All right, so the, the first is, we've had drainage issues on James Farm Road. One of the areas in question, we're not exactly, we done some, we did some work there. I think we've got it taken care of, but there is a swale off the side of the road that could get cleaned out. We're not exactly sure where the right-of-way is in this area. The road could be in the middle of it, it could not be in the middle of it. So this would be a contract for a surveyor to go out and figure out if the swale for 35 James Farm is in the right-of-way or if it's outside the right-of-way and if it's outside the right-of-way, it would create an easement so we could maintain it, since currently the water's running off and going across the driveway. So if it's within the right-of-way, we would only do the survey work, the 1325. If it's outside the right-of-way, we would have to do the easement design for the 1550. So the total project cost would not exceed $2,875. And this will come out of my engineering line in the highway budget.
Questions, comments?
Trying to look up something, this is not.
Different property, right?
Different. It's a different, okay, I just, just wanted to be sure, okay, no, no, that was my question, all right, thank you very much. You knew what I was going to ask.
Yeah.
Anymore, anybody?
No, I'm okay with it.
Selectman Casper, okay?
Yep, do we need to motion?
Yep.
I got the motion. Move to authorize the Public Works Director to enter into a contract with Jones and Beach Engineers, Inc. For professional services to be performed at 35 James Farm Road in Lee, New Hampshire for an amount not to exceed $2,875, set funds to come from the Highway Department operating budget. Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, selectman Bugbee?
Yes.
Select person Casper?
Yes.
Selectman Brown, yes. Okay, Mr. Bullock.
Then second on the list is our annual paving project. So this year, we, we want to pave Bell Lane, Hobbs Road, Sawyer Road, Love Lane, Wheelwright Drive and Riverside Farm Drive. These were supposed to be paved last year, but stepping stones was in a lot worse shape, so we flip-flopped the years around. And the low bidder this year was Pike Industries who paved for us last year. And they came in at $73.80. Their figures were $174,281 to pave. What they have, according to my tonnage, what I thought, according to their 7380, we're probably going to spend closer to $184,000. For some reason, their estimated tons are 134 less than mine. But again, we still have it in the budget to be able to do it. So I would ask that you vote to enter a contract with Pike Industries for the 2021 paving project.
So Steve, in terms of, I assume you're going to do those roads, it seems like you might have some money left over. Are you going to try to do another road if that's possible or what do you think? And just not spend that money?
No, so we've got, we've been putting off paving parts of the Highway Department yard for the last five or six years because we've been short in some transfer station stuff.
Okay.
So we were going to do that and then Tuttle Road is also on the list for next year and there's a few spots on that road we could pave or shim.
Okay.
And smooth that one out, so we'll use less tonnage next year.
All right, so just try to, if there's any extra money, you'll try to work on other things that need to be paved in the town.
Yeah, stuff that we've been putting off for a long time and
Okay.
I still have 15,000 from this year that I try to encumber over.
Okay.
Into it too, to try to get a lot more taken care of.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah.
Any more comments?
Sounds good.
In that case, I make a motion to authorize the Public Works Director to enter into a contract with Pike Industries for the 2021 paving plan for an amount not to exceed $200,000. May I get a second, please?
Second. That was mine, don't be stealing my seconds there.
Roll call, vote, select person Casper?
Yes.
Shout it out, there we go.
Yes.
Select person Bugbee?
Yes, sir.
Select person Brown, yes, motion passes. Next up, Julie Glover, Town Administrator.
No, next is select person Casper.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're absolutely right, I apologize, select person Casper.
So we wanted to talk about the swap shop opening up. We're going to be having a yard sale townwide twice beforehand, hoping that that's going to move some of the excess stuff in people's homes around and then hopefully we can open up after that. I have just been delving into all the statistics and numbers, trying to understand what safety precautions we need in order to make sure that everyone is, you know, as safe as possible. A couple of great suggestions were to have the windows open at all times and the door open at all times. I think that also to add a hand sanitizing, whatever, thing.
Patient?
To the front. As a person who used to volunteer at the swap shop, I can say that we always should have had that and I'm really excited that we'll have that, because it's very hard to keep yourself clean when there's no running water and only one part of body to, to take care of, cleaning your hands when you're touching everyone's stuff, so I love that idea. And then as far as masks, I think it's a little bit tricky, because we just had the CDC say that you don't have to wear a mask up if you have been vaccinated, there's no way to know who has been vaccinated. But then you also look at the statistics that say that you have a less than 1% chance of passing coronavirus outside anyway. If all the windows and the doors are open, then their chance of spread, if you're, you know, in that environment and also you're only allowed to be at the swap shop for 15 minutes or less, is very minimal. So what I would like to say is that either you're masked or you're vaxxed, we cannot enforce that. So I think it's an important suggestion. And I think that we just have to trust each other that we understand that, you know, children, you go to the swap shop and people that have not been vaccinated don't want to increase the spread. So if you haven't been vaccinated, to wear a mask and if you have, that you don't need to. And I think we have to, to trust that people will be taking care of each other and looking out for each other. We also need to have a social distancing, so just have some space between people. I don't think there's an actual number that you can say is exactly the random ass space, but if it's really full, you know, to have the ability for the volunteer to say, can you just wait a minute? Or another idea I had and Steve, Mr. Bullock, I meant to ask you is, you know, a lot of times we have those tables in the middle. Maybe we could just have it where in the, the morning shift takes the tables outside and then you work there and then those tables can just pick up and go inside at the end of the shift, so that there is more swap shopping just really outside without even a roof over it. I don't know if that's possible, I know we move stuff in and out a lot.
As long as it goes back inside.
Right, to have that space.
You can limit the inside capacity too, if you wanted to.
Yeah. It's hard, because if you have a family with like four kids, that's
I know.
Different than if you have two people in there, you know?
Yeah, the date to open it that I had planned on weeks ago would have been the 10th of June. Yeah, the date to open it that I had planned on weeks ago would have been the tenth of June.
Mm-hmm. Which is after all the yard sales, right?
Yeah, five days, the last yard sale is June fifth. You open it Tuesday, the tenth. And that also gives enough time to see if you can get enough volunteers to. Run it.
We talked about having a training as well so that the volunteers would all be on the same page and that everybody knows exactly what the rules are. Um, so maybe something we could do either on Zoom or in person.
Yeah, because I'm anticipating that that place is gonna get slammed with furniture and everything else, and there's gonna be a lot of it that gets taken. And more of it's gonna end up in the dumpsters, so we're gonna have to make sure that the stuff that needs to get paid for is actually getting paid for since we're gonna end up probably getting rid of. Seventy percent of it anyway.
Right, so we just need to really have those rules super, super tight and everyone understands them, I know as a swap shop volunteer um rules. You know, spread in different ways, so I'd like to have it right from you and have everyone really understand.
I was saying about it today, and I have these stickers and. Um, the guy working the bulky fee building can put a sticker on it and initial it, and if it doesn't have the sticker on it, then they can't take it. And they gotta go back and pay for it. And then they can take it.
And would would we, when would this opening, we're gonna wait till after the townwide garage sales?
June tenth.
June tenth.
I'm sorry, what was it, June tenth?
Yeah, if they can get enough volunteers, uh, you know, or it opens the twelfth, which would be the Saturday, but it all depends on how many volunteers they're able to get.
Okay. And that was gonna be my question to you, Steve, how many volunteers do you have, and do you have enough to open it? You know, that was a problem before.
I don't know how many that we have, there's like, there's two separate groups of volunteers, they've kinda.
The factions.
They're themselves, there's. There's, there's two separate groups and then some of the in. So I don't know exactly what they have, I don't know how many are coming back.
Okay.
Because this is gonna bring up the, another point. That. We're gonna have to talk about in. I mean, we can talk about it in public, a while ago, you had voted to let. Willie come back. To. Volunteer even though we didn't live in town, as long as he didn't get caught throwing trash over the wall again, and he got caught throwing trash over the wall again, so he's been. Removed, so there's one less volunteer they're gonna have.
And I'm probably not able to go back right now, kind of super busy. I know Helen also, so there's a lot of people that have left, so I think we need to put a call out to the town and let people know that we're looking for volunteers. And let them know, um. You know what that looks like, and that's why that training will be great, because then everyone can kinda. Know that they can start fresh.
So.
It's so fun.
My only thing would be, I want to give Steve the discretion if he doesn't have enough volunteers that it doesn't open on certain days. Maybe, maybe if he's only got, you know, enough for maybe one or two days, that that's all it is open for. Um, but yeah, if he doesn't have enough help out there, it it can't be open, it just not not manned or.
No.
Staff.
Oh, so the way they did it before, when I first started, they didn't have enough volunteers. They were only open like half a day Tuesday, not at all Thursday, but they always had volunteers for Saturday, so. If there was no volunteers, they just locked the door and left, there was not open, not man.
And also on rainy days, I'm just worried about having that whole building very, very closed down, and I don't know if either just say on rainy days, everyone wears a mask, or we don't, we're not open on rainy days, I don't know how you wanna, I just feel like that's a, that's a different set of risks when you're closed in that space. I don't know. Thoughts, nobody? You are.
Any more comments? Questions?
And you can just. Closed on.
So uh, we'll just.
Just a minute, Mr. Bullock had a great point, what would you want to say?
I'd just say it's closed on rainy days for the time being.
I think that makes sense. Okay. Sorry, Mr. Brown.
That sounds fun.
Okay.
I think.
We have a consensus vote.
I think after it's open for a period of time, I think Steve, if you have any concerns, please come back to us and we can address them at that particular time. If you have you tons of volunteers and you wanna expand it some more, you know, let us discuss it. But at the moment, I would like to give you discretion in terms of allowing it to be open when you deem it to be appropriate for it to be open.
So here's a question for you, since I'm sure that it's gonna happen. How many? How long, how many complaints do you want to receive before I just? Decide to close it? You know, we open it. And I get inundated with complaints before I can come back to another select board meeting, just want me to pull the plug?
Your, your decision, but if they've, they've got a whole bunch of complaints to, you know, depending on what they are, of course.
Yes.
But uh. I, I think you got the keys to the, you got the keys to the bad lock.
Yeah, I think if there's, it depends on the kind of complaints and what people are are complaining about, and I think if it's, if it's taking up all your time to deal with swap shop and you can't do the work you need to do, that's, that's different.
Yeah.
So if you get people complaining, hey, I went to the swap shop and nobody's wearing a mask, I'm not gonna go there. Then, you know, have them wear their masks if they're uncomfortable being there, or just don't go.
Yeah.
Um, but then bring those particular con- concerns back to us and we can take a look at it, so.
Alright.
But until that time, you get all the complaints.
Oh, I know.
Tell them to complain to me, um, I think Linda Reinhold has something to say.
I have, um, yes, thank you, a little concern in that, um. I think Steve, unless something has changed, it's a little shorthanded in the transfer station. And putting this on top of being short in the transfer station, I'm not sure that's fair to him.
It's a great point. Do we have a volunteer coordinator that is able to take most of the responsibility right now like we did a long time ago, or do we not have somebody in place for that?
She ran, she would text me every once in a while and ask if I had any news on the swap shop, and my response was always, I didn't close it, the select board did, if you. Wanted to know, you should ask, go before the board and ask.
So let's maybe say that this is all, the swap shop opening is based on. A full volunteer coordinator, who takes the responsibilities of organizing the volunteers and has communication with Mr. Bullock to make sure that. All of the um rules are being followed. And if.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think there's some basic things, you're not allowed to, you know, get complain and yell about if somebody is or isn't wearing a mask, it's about treating each other with respect and and understanding each other's choices. And um, you know, if there's problems with. If it's taking up too much time from the transfer station, then we'll have to temporarily close, which means if you don't know the rules, please visit. The swap shop rules before bringing your items to the swap shop so that you know what you can and can't get rid of. Does that work?
Yeah.
You're putting a lot on him.
So Katrin, why don't you go ahead and uh? Put a. Put a sentence together. For um, for opening.
So I motion that we open the swap shop on June tenth. Um, as long as we have a volunteer coordinator. Volunteers. And have had a chance to train them so that they understand the rules clearly, and we have expressed those rules to the town.
I second that. Roll call vote, selectman Bugby?
Yes.
Select person Casper?
Yes.
Selectman Brown, yes, motion passes.
Thank you, Katrin, for bringing that up.
I love the swap shop.
Other people do too, and their garages are getting full, they wanna get rid of their stuff, so.
Well, and I think there's a, there's a piece of it that I think is missed by a lot of people, and that's that that's the one chance you have to stop and talk to a friend or a neighbor and to learn something about each other, and I think that's very valuable, and I I just wanna make sure we're not putting too much responsibility on Mr. Bullock, but I do think it's an important part of our town.
Well, Steve will have to let us know if it's getting too much for him, so.
Please reach out.
Okay, let's move on now to number nine, Julie Glover, Town Administrator.
Did Annie have her hand up, hand up? I don't know.
Who?
Annie had her hand up, I don't know if she wanted to talk.
I didn't see.
I don't see it.
It was there, but, okay, never mind.
Thank you.
Okay.
Who's up?
I am, but for some reason. There we go. Okay, so at the request of uh, selectman. Bugby, I contacted JP Pest to take a visit to the Historical Society Museum um because of a mouse problem. You may recall that we recently entered into new contracts with JP Pest for our buildings. Um, the museum wasn't on that list, the museum. Hasn't been on the list for at least the last ten years, I don't know why, but that's the way the original contract was set up. So according to JP Pest, there is a serious rodent issue. Uh, and the cost will be five hundred and fifty-three dollars initially, and then sixty-eight dollars per month thereafter. So wanted to find out whether the board wants to add. The museum building to uh, the contract.
So can I give an update from the Historical Society's point of view?
Sure.
Um, what they would like to do, if it's amenable with the the town, is to wait until after. The. The open season, if you will. And so when they get done, I think their last is the last third Saturday in October, and at that point. Go through the process of what's being proposed here. The other thing is, the way that those particular rodents are getting into that particular structure, they need to be closed up, so I think there needs to be some of that done before this gentleman goes goes and does his, his thing, if you will. Uh, because if you don't close up the holes, they're gonna be back again, you know, next year or whatever, so.
Is, is it obvious where the holes are?
Um, some people have taken a look, they've seen a couple of places. And I guess the other thing that I'll says, the, the ruin issue here is quite bad. Um, the people that are there don't think it's. You know, as bad as he says it is. Um, but that's here nor there. Um, but the, those particular places that they're getting in need to be closed up. Because, you know, you're killing off the rodents, but you're leaving the door open, so you know, that's not good either, so.
Is, is not the, the uh. The five hundred and fifty-three dollars would be uh, closing it up and then fumigating it to kill the rodents that are in there, leaving them closed up, and then move into a sixty-eight dollar recurring monthly fee to to make sure everything is still. If you would, up to, up to the level it should be in order to kill rodents.
Well, they, they place traps, they don't.
Yeah.
Traps and poison, they don't fumigate it.
The five hundred and fifty-three is the traps, they're not closing up anything, Mr. Brown, that's just, you know. So I think, I think at some point, we need to take a look in terms of how they're getting in. Close up those particular holes and then have this gentleman come in and do his thing, so.
I have two questions, one is, um, I'm very concerned about how we use. Um, the, the bait and the, that kind of thing, because I never hear anyone talk about the in- impact that. Poisoning mice has on the rest of the animal species around us, and as a wildlife major, that makes me very nervous, so I'd love to know more about how JP Pest. Does that to make sure we're not endangering other wildlife. And the other question I have is, do we have a time set up to talk about what we're doing with the historical building and annex and all those things so that we can have a discussion about what the plan is going forward and what expenses will be whose and. Um, how all that's gonna work?
So in answer to your first question, I think with the five hundred and fifty-three, they were actually proposing snap traps.
Yeah, that's what I thought with that.
Um, and then for the, for the rest of it, you know, if you notice the other buildings, they have the big black boxes with. Mouse poison in them.
Oh, yeah, so.
Mouse poison, they eat and then they go back out.
You're already poisoning them, Katrin, so.
No, but when you, when the, when a mouse eats poison, then the poison is in the mouse, and then they go out and die, and the animal eats them, and then that animal, that poison builds up and actually kills a lot of our hawks and our other um higher. On the, it's just, it's just something that we should be aware of and make sure we're making environmentally sound choices.
Well, at the moment, it's not very environmentally sound of what's happening at the other building, so we need to. Change that.
There are many ways to kill a mouse, that's all I'm saying, and the way that kills owls and hawks.
I am very familiar with the very way, very many ways to kill mice.
Exactly. Let's not also kill our wildlife.
Since we have this problem with the museum, what about the status of the other buildings, things like the annex, uh, parish house, so on and so forth, I'm sure those rodents move around.
Well, except for the parish house, the other buildings are already being treated.
The others have already been treated?
Yeah.
All of them?
Except for the parish house, parish house is not on the list.
Has anyone checked the parish house recently to see what the mouse population's doing in there?
Uh, Bill Stevens checks in, he hasn't said anything about the mice.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the.
We certainly sent it to the town, I guess.
We get mice in the library on a regular basis, they usually come in and die. Somewhere.
Oh, that's sad.
Yeah. And smelly.
Well, yeah, I just, it's inside the, I don't really like that plan either. Dying somewhere that doesn't, yeah, that'd be great.
We can't find them, they're probably behind some stacks somewhere against the wall.
I have no problem killing mice, just for the record, I just don't wanna kill other animals as well as the mice.
So how about if we ask the town administrator to check with JP Pest and see what other methods there are that. He has to get rid of the rodents besides poison?
Well, I, again, I know personally.
Yeah.
There's sticky traps, there are snap traps, and then there's the. What I refer to euphemistically as the bucket of death. You drown them.
The bucket of death, we call that a um chipmunk swimming pool around here, but sure.
Yeah, so I, I mean, and honestly, beyond that. I, I don't know how else you get rid of them.
Yeah, and there are different kinds of poison, some can kill them, you know, instantly and then they don't go out, others they go out and back into the wild, and. I think we just, I don't know. I can, I can happily look into that more deep deeply or talk to them myself, if that's something you want me to do.
Yeah, we can talk about that offline.
Perfect.
Yep.
And I'd also be happy to share my design for the bucket of death with anyone who's interested.
Fabulous. We could have a whole fun session on that.
A separate meeting on how to get rid of mice.
So.
Publics welcome.
Personally, I'd like to delay this until after the Historical Society's, you know, open time sometime, and I think it's October. So I would like to put this table.
This was at your request, so.
Understand that, I understand that, I understand that, I asked the question because I thought it was covered, but it wasn't covered, so. And as subsequent to that, the Historical Society has had um discussions about it, and they would like to wait until afterwards.
Okay.
So.
Waiting works. All right. Gives us time to perfect that swimming pool.
Yep.
And well, find out more information in terms of, you know, you know, other things, maybe we don't wanna use the. The methods that they're using right now with the poison, so.
Thank you.
Or maybe they'll carry the building off, and we won't have to worry about it anymore.
Well, it's been there since what, seventy, seventy-four, so they haven't done a very good job of carrying it off yet.
Maybe they're closed, though.
Could be, could be, could be, um, maybe they're working in a transporter or something, so.
Shall we move on?
Yes.
I make a motion to move to approve the proposed agreement between the town of Lee and the JP Pest Services as presented, can I get a second?
No, you cannot.
Oh, too bad, the mice will live again, what is this?
They wanna delay it.
I'm sorry?
The Historical Society wants to delay the program until at least October, so we'll have to revisit it in the fall.
Oh, okay.
There we go.
You can get a lot of mice in three, four months. Okay.
So.
We'll just move on.
Next item, um. The Recreation Commission at a recent meeting approved uh, having Rachel Gazowski, the Recreation Director in Durham, use the pickleball courts at Little River Park. Um, for a pickleball workshop open to residents of Lee, Madbury, and Durham. I advise Ms. Rossi that this would be something that the select board would have to vote on or talk about at least. So even though they had the program on Friday, um, they did not, so far as I know. Close the pickleball court so much as they were the first ones there, because right now the courts are first come, first served. So um. The request now is whether you would let. Um, Ms. Gazowski close the pickleball courts. on May 22nd from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM to conduct her workshop.
That's May 14th and 22nd, is that right?
Well, May 14th already passed, so May 22nd.
Okay, I got it.
Yep.
I was a little confused about how this all came to be, because it had been advertised before it was approved, and then people had already signed up before it was approved. And I wasn't quite sure. That's not really how I want to have things go in the future. So I guess that's something we'll discuss with her.
Right.
And then these decisions for this, for these things, is that normally the Select Board's decision? As opposed to the Rec Committee, or is it?
Well, I mean, that's just been an ongoing conversation as to what exact authority the Recreation Commission has. Right now, as I understand it, the Recreation Commission is in charge of programming, but this wasn't really programming of the Recreation Commission. This was use of Little River Park. So in my opinion, that falls under the Select Board's purview.
Right.
Unless the Select Board wants to turn that over to the Rec Commission, which it has not wanted to do.
May I ask if there was any feedback on being closed Friday, May 14th at all? Because the courts are pretty well, pretty well used. At least every time I've gone there, there's been people using them. So I'm just wondering, did we hear anything on the May 14th close?
I haven't heard anything. I don't know whether Mr. Bullock did.
I haven't heard anything yet, but I know that a lot of Lee residents use that court on Friday evenings. And I had talked to Karen about this, and I had said, close one, but not both. Which is half the reason we made one blue and one green when we painted them. So you could say, if you, if it got to the point where you needed to do this, you could say you can use the blue court, and the other people have a green court.
And who's putting the workshop together?
Durham Rec Commission or the Durham Rec Department. And my reasoning for not closing both, but just closing one is it's open to Durham and Madbury residents, too. So not just Lee residents. If it was just Lee residents, I'd say close them both, but it's not. And I don't want to see the people that know how to play pickleball, that play every Friday night, not be able to play because of a workshop going on.
Yeah, I think that's why if they'd come to us first before just setting the date and organizing and then coming after, we would be able to have said, you know, these are the times that work really well for the town and these particular pickleball courts, as opposed to just having a time given to us.
I would agree.
We can say no.
I think it's okay to close one and then to have, I think that's a good idea.
I think that's, that's a very good idea.
I concur.
Okay.
I think the problem is they have so many people that they're going to want to use both, so.
All right, I will let her know that she can use one or not the other. Steve, you don't think it makes any difference whether it's blue or green, do you?
No, and the other thing I had said to Karen was, they can use the other one, but if somebody shows up and wants to play, they need to
Right.
go to the one that they're on.
Well, I would think that they would sign up enough people for two courts, so.
They did, yeah.
Yeah.
And we also share with her that that needs to be approved by us in the future?
Yep.
So, and can you communicate that to the Rec Commission as well?
Yeah, although, well, Karen knows that now, sure.
And I know that.
Okay, well, I think the Rec Commission needs to know it officially.
Yep.
Okay.
I think everybody was caught off guard and wasn't quite sure where this came from, so they didn't, I think that was confusing. So now that we understand, we can do it better in the future.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Facebook page, we had talked about starting a town Facebook page during the goals and objectives discussion. So, but the board didn't really have a lengthy conversation about Facebook or definitively say, yes, we want to do that. So that's why I'm bringing it forward. I think that we'd have to, or my recommendation would be to go slowly at first. So in other words, when we first start it up, don't allow commenting. Secondly, I would restrict administrators to just myself to begin with. And then we'll proceed from there. I, I have some concerns about allowing multiple employees to be able to post on it, which I realize would be more convenient, but if they are non-exempt employees, I have concerns, because it happens now where employees feel that they have to be accessible 24/7. And number one, that's not fair to them, quite frankly. And second, it can get us into trouble with the hour and wage division, because if you have employees posting things on the town Facebook page after hours or answering questions after hours, then they're working. And then we get into a timekeeping issue, and then we have to pay them, so. I think we should move forward with setting this up, but I just want to move cautiously.
Do we have the ability to have them not comment, but put a like? Or, you know, just like the part, the happy face, whatever?
I actually don't know. I mean, I can look.
Yeah, I think that's an option. That way people can at least express how they feel about something, but there's not a running dialogue, and then if they want to discuss it somewhere else, that's fine. But I do think that makes sense.
Sure. What will we do when we post Select Board meetings and we get nothing but thumbs down?
And we'll know that we have an unhappy public, which is important for us to know, and we can look into why that is so grumpy.
The, the reason that I bring up on the screen, the Tana Barrington's Facebook guidelines, I think we're going to have to establish policies. We have to have written policies in place in anticipation of when we do allow comments. And as you know, people commenting on social media can get really rude.
Yep.
But because we're a government, we have to be very careful about deleting anything.
Right.
So, again, we, we just need to move cautiously.
One thing, I think right now we start very, very small, and we just put information out, and then that can be shared on other pages, things like that. I like you being in charge of it right now, because that helps people understand when they're asking you to post something, what the rules are, and you can say, this doesn't work, this does, and that way people can learn what is and isn't allowed. And then down the road, we can have other options, I think. Eventually, you want to be able to have people at least message with questions, and we have to figure out who's going to be answering those, and that can be time consuming. And so I just, I want to be aware of your time and figuring out, you know, this, this could be a whole new piece of work you want to be aware of, not.
Yeah, I think it was, I went and looked at a number of different towns' Facebook pages, and a couple of them, in response to questions, they try to drive people to the website.
Yes.
Because, you know, most answers are on the town's website.
Yeah.
So.
You could have an automated response that said someone will get back to you, but if, to find the answer to your question, please see this website, and it's very possible that that would, that would help a lot of people.
Yeah, so.
We, we have a disclaimer. A lot of people like to try to report things through Messenger, although we've countless times put that, you know, we don't monitor it. So we have a disclaimer when somebody leaves us a message on Facebook, it says, we do not monitor this page 24/7, so somebody may not get back to you right away. It pops right up when they, when they send a message.
Yeah, that's really nice, because then you get that message.
Yep. So is the board in agreement with moving forward on this?
Yes, with the stipulations that you, our authority noted.
Okay, all right, thank you. We'll start working on that.
Okay.
Did you guys see at the bottom that it says select person after all the names?
No.
Just pointing that out for you. All of Barrington uses select person.
Oh, they are. Look at that.
Oh, look at that. Backdoor for y'all.
Draft cell phone policy is next under the Town Administrator's Report. I'm actually still working on that with the attorney. I had sent it to our attorney and had a long conversation with her about it, so still need to make some changes, so I'll hopefully bring that back to the Select Board at a future meeting.
And this particular list is up to date?
Actually, I found out after we put the agenda out that Mr. Bullock gets.
That was going to be my question.
Stipend.
Okay, all right, so he should be added to the list.
Yep.
And I guess I would ask that each of the department heads just review who is in their particular group here.
Right.
If those particular people still need to have that particular service or not. I don't know the answer to that question, but if they can just review each of those, like for you, the two building maintenance people, for Karen, the building inspector, for Chief Johnsfield, the lieutenant, and for Steve Bullock, his two staff people, oh, and excuse me. Julie, I would assume the welfare director still needs it anyways, but
Yes.
Yeah, so if you can ask them just to check the list and to make sure that those people still, in their minds, still need to have that.
Sure, although according to the policy, the part of the policy that isn't going to change, which would dictate who gets a phone and who doesn't.
Okay.
I think just about everybody on this list meets that criteria.
Yeah, they're all out and about.
All right.
Right, so. Couple of things that were not on the agenda before I forget. I will be on vacation next week. Well, I'll be away next week. So.
So keep it down.
In the capable hands of Ms. DuVal. We have the 2021 P1 tax warrant. It was a late addition, so we, we didn't have it to get on the agenda before now. So just wanted to make the board aware of this, that the taxes will be due July 2nd. So I'll send this out for the board's signature. Just a reminder that the town offices will be closed tomorrow from 11:30 AM to 2:00 in the afternoon.
What's happening?
That is the employee get together.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Okay. And I wasn't invited.
Nope.
Nope.
Darn.
I'm very excited you guys are doing that. I hope you have a really lovely evening or afternoon.
Nice day, so.
I hope so.
Yeah.
What are you serving?
You're not going, so who, how?
I think we're grilling some things and salads and the like. The food is generally going to be healthy.
Great, hamburgers and grilled chicken. I'm cooking.
Yep.
Sounds nice.
Yeah.
All right, very good.
And I think that's everything I have. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll enter a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote. Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Select person Casper?
Yes.
Select person Brown? Yes. Motion passes. How sweet it is.
Is that the end? Did we do it?
No.
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 Well, it's the end of my stack.
No, there's a there's miscellaneous.
Oh, yes.
Miscellaneous.
Miscellaneous.
Anybody miscellaneous? Yes, I have a miscellaneous.
Okay.
For seven years, I've been reviewing the manifest every two weeks. And now that I'm unavailable during the day when it's, when you can see it at the town hall, one of the other select persons really should review it every two weeks. So I would like to pass that off to somebody else.
Well, I think that, that would be nice of a select person, Casper, to do that.
No, I just volunteered. That's cool. I'll do it.
Excellent, excellent.
Who do I go to and what day do you do it?
Well.
Well, let, yeah, I can let you know what the schedule is, yeah.
Perfect.
Well, actually, the trigger is when you get an email through Adobe to sign the AP manifest.
Yep.
That means it's ready, and you can come take a look at it after that.
So just, I physically need to be there to see it, is what you're saying. Okay, perfect. I will do that.
Okay.
So you're looking for, you know, make sure the backup is there. If there's some particular expense that you have a question about, you can ask somebody about it. But it's just a second or third or fourth pair of eyes to look at that particular thing. I don't necessarily find something every single time, but once in a while, something pops up. Either I ask a question, or what's this, or maybe if there's documentation that's not too clear, like if they're buying something, the invoice says, you know, purchased cost of $25, but it doesn't say what it is. It really should say what it is, things like that. So it's not that hard. You just need to go, you leaf through it, and then when you're done, that's it. You get it and back to them.
Sounds great.
It gives you a chance to come to the town offices and see us.
I'll stop at the library first to get our mail.
Yeah.
Plus, it's a good way to see what the town's buying and how much it costs and stuff like that, so.
I go through, and I have all these questions, and I just, I, I, I'd be very happy to learn that, and I think I'll learn a lot more, so I'm looking forward to it.
Just make sure you know where the distributor is when you see the check through the school district. It's almost a million dollars every month, so, you know.
I, I have been going through the paperwork, so, you know, I've already been.
So you've already had to use the distributor, okay?
I was going to say to make you use it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's, that's great, Katrin. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else?
Is next week your first week, Mr. Bugby?
No, last week was my first week.
Oh, well, congratulations.
No, 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 congratulations. I was on the, I was on the plane to Denver with the screaming child going out, and on the screaming child flight coming back, so.
Perfect.
Yes, it was, it was, it was lovely. It was lovely.
Where are their offices at, at peace, Scott?
Building 302 or something like that. It's next to the security building.
Oh, okay.
They showed me the simulator today. That thing is awesome. It replicates a KC-46.
Our meeting has gone off the rails.
Well, Carrie knows what I'm talking about, too.
Yep. You ought to, you know, after you're there a while, they might let you, they might let you try and fly it.
Oh, yes, yes, they told me that. Yes, when it's up and running, yes, yes, they will. There's also a separate one for the boom operators, and you can do that one, too. And if I make friends with enough pilots, they'll take me up for a flight.
Well, I'll tell you what, it's possible to crash that simulator, and don't, don't think it's not real. If it is real, when you
Yep.
Noise, yell, screams, fire, the whole thing, anyway.
Well, we don't like fire, so.
No.
All right, number 12?
Good luck, yeah.
Number 12?
You have anything else? We did miscellaneous.
Non-public.
Oh.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, oh, yes. Okay, let me get my get my non-public words out. I'm inundated here.
You want me to do it?
Please, go ahead.
I moved into non-public session, New Hampshire RSA 91-803, Roman numeral two, sections A and I. Roll call vote required. You have a second?
C and
I'll second it.
C and L?
C and L.
All right, C and L, sorry, C and L. Do I have a second?
I seconded.
All right, roll call vote. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Katrin Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Bugby? Yes, motion passes. So we're all done, so I moved to adjourn.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I moved to adjourn.
Bye-bye.
Yeah.
Yeah, roll call.
Oh, yes.
Do we have to seal the minutes, too?
Wait, yeah. If you want to seal the minutes, then you need to take a vote to seal the minutes.
Okay, so Katrin, will you remove your, your second?
Yes.
I'll remove my motion. Okay. Now we're good. Now we're good. Now I move to seal the non-public minutes.
I second it.
Okay. I second it. I third it. I forfeit it.
Roll call.
Roll vote.
Roll call vote required. Selectman Bugby?
Yes.
Select person Casper?
Yes.
Selectman Brown, yes.
Now I move to adjourn.
I second that.
Okay, in that case, have a great day.